I'm going to start out with public comment. About a guest, does the union have anything to bring up?
No.
Left of this town.
Have you seen Dylan? Who Dylan Chambers?
I've not.
He said something about he wanted to say something to the board. I told him.
I know where he is.
I'll go look.
He was in the cafeteria. He was in the cafeteria. He was sitting in the cafeteria.
Sheriff Taylor, do you want to say anything about, I kind of explained your proposal last at the lab.
I'm trying to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, Sheriff Taylor, I have. I do appreciate the offer to help us out on that. I guess my first question is, is this a full, I don't quite understand, is this full time for Massacre kids, one that between starting time to ending time? So we will have an all shirt car? As far as, can you explain a little bit better? I mean, I don't understand.
Like are they going to start Monday through Friday with normal work week for school session? They will be here all day from, at one of the buildings from beginning of school to end of school.
Correct.
Correct. So that's basically a full time salary employee donated to.
Yes.
I guess my next question is, this is free to the district, correct?
Correct.
Which I'm all for, but how is this being paid for?
To the county.
County taxpayers pick up the bill.
Correct.
Okay. I guess my next one is, has Joffe Maple Grove been approached at the same offer?
No.
Okay.
They may have a resource offer.
They have a resource offer. They pay for theirs.
Yeah. They have a resource offer.
Correct.
How is the time going to be divided up among the families?
Something we're still working on right now, whether it be half a day, if one school half a day, next school, or if it would be a couple hours at a time, it's still something that's a hurry that we need to work on to see what happens with the two schools.
Are we looking at just the outlined county schools, Franklin County, New York County, and so forth?
I'm working on that.
So it'd be more outlining schools divided between an eight hour shift.
Correct.
Okay. Any more questions? All right, let's move down to the consent approval of minutes.
I think Dylan came in.
Dylan?
You don't care.
Oh, okay, Dylan. You have something to say to the school board?
Yes, do you want me to go ahead and go?
Yeah, get ready.
You're on.
This is your time.
Okay, well, I have a handout because I would like to be able to do that also.
Yep.
Got a man works hard.
This is the uniform. Yeah.
Skip the board's number. Yeah, seven, or actually, one, two, three, five. Oh, you want me to go ahead and start my trade?
Yes.
Okay. Hello.
You step on up here.
You want me to come up there?
Yeah.
Okay.
We want to see your smiling face.
Okay.
Come on up here.
I'm fine.
That's good.
Okay. Hello, everybody. My name is Dylan Chambers, and if most of you guys don't know who I am, here's a little bit of background of who I am. I'm a 17-year-old senior here at the high school. I'm the senior class president, student council president. This is my second year with student council. I'm the head student section leader. This is my sixth year with Massacre volleyball as a manager for junior high and high school, second year manager for the late picture basketball team, and second year manager to girls track. With all that said, I'm here to talk to you today about a little bit of things. As you noticed on the handout that you've gotten, it's got a little bit of our success on here from our Massacre volleyball seasons. Some of the things to point out on there, that this is our most successful season all within the program has started. With that being said, our record was 33-6, 10-0 to conference championship, and this is our first time getting that conference championship since 2013. First time getting Sweet 16, four-year all-conference selections, and three-year all-south, or three all-south selections, averaging over 30 wins within the last nine years in a row. The junior high program, we have also started on building a foundation there for preparing for the high school seasons. With that being said, there's four state titles, nine regional championship titles in the past 10 years. Team high school successes will be 18 regular season tournament titles, four SIRR conference titles, five regional titles in the last seven years. A big key to point out would be Vessi Lewis from that. A few awards that she has received would be 2019 Southern Illinois Player of the Year, second team all-state, and she also received all-south and all-conference this year also. She also broke the school record with 437 kills, and we also had Vessi Lewis go into Johnny this fall, three attend Shawnee to play volleyball with them the past couple of years, and then Mackenzie Doris attending SIU for all four years. And another sport to talk about will be our late picture basketball team. Some big successes that they have brought to this community would be with their positive record with 7-4 and 1-1 SIRR conference as of today. Second, they also received second in Marion, in the Marion tournament this past, beginning of the season, and have recently received first place in the Metropolis City tournament. Callie McCraw got all tournament, and then Fairpass went with the B. Some big, a big note that we've received a lot of support from the community thus far in coming out, with everybody coming out and seeing the girls play. And then they've also done some community service as of the past couple of weeks, including the toy drive for a student that's been diagnosed with cancer in Hannah Jones' world. And then they've also done Christmas cards for local student in Brookport that also has the same disease. Last thing I'll be here to talk about will be the student council. And the student council has 52 active members inside of the organization. This entire beginning of the year, we've really focused on getting to December, as we all know that December can be hard for some families out. So with December being here now, we've now done Christmas meal boxes. We've done like food drive, butter break sales, a food drive here at the high school, and then we've collected stuff, donations to Big John's and Save-A-Lot, received a $750 donation from the barge, and then $350 donation from working at MES Fall Festival. So we've done Christmas boxes for all local students in the community, well, for the, not the community, but for the students at the schools, like such as Joffla and then all of our county schools, and here at high school and junior high. Last year, we did a total of 200 total boxes, and in this year, student council went down in the numbers for requests from the schools, which would be 154. Inside of these boxes, we'll give them ham, rice, and other types of goods that will be donated for either stuff for all the students. The boxes will be donated tomorrow with extra food inside of them for the break, the students will receive all those things in there. They're still receiving a Christmas ham, rice, corn, green beans, yams, instant potatoes, stuffing, cranberry sauce, bread mix, dessert, local bread, and a dozen of eggs. Some other big community things that's going on here in the high school will be the coin war that we did to raise money for buying Christmas gifts for some local students here at the high school or within the community. And assuming that you guys saw the tree out there when you walked in, that was put up from one of our local basketball students, Julian Russell. He put up a Christmas tree with giving, basically like scarves, hats, clothes, some stuff like that for winter months, and he is going to be donating those to some local charities and stuff after the donation has definitely completed, after the end of this week. With all that said, we've really got some really big positive sports stuff, like some big positive things in there, and then our high school's been really stepping up, doing some community service and making some changes this year.
Is there any questions that you guys might have for me?
How many total ones are you guys teaching this?
For this year?
Yeah.
150.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. It's a lot of work.
A lot of work?
Yes. So you had how many students in that student council?
52 active.
Wow.
Good.
Thank you and all them for doing such a warm job, hard work.
Thank you.
And I see you everywhere.
Yes.
Every time you're at gym or somewhere at a game, you're there.
Right.
And we appreciate your hard work and.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
If there's any other questions, thank you, guys, for your time. I really appreciate it very much. Allow me to speak.
Thank you, Dylan.
Okay, do we have any more? It's hard to beat that right there. Wow. All right, let's move on down to consent approval of minutes, bills due payable, and treasures report. Does everybody have a chance to look at it?
Everybody get the minutes.
Yes.
I don't think there's anything kind of ordinary. We did make two more payments, was that on this one? For the HVAC controls for Florida junior high? And they've been working on all. They have it on the regular. Okay. Those were two big digit items from health life safety. Those projects are both almost complete, and we have a quote at the elementary school we're looking at that one. It's the last proprietary system we had.
The controls, you report them better.
Much, much better. You can actually control the temperature. Still got some bunch of workouts, and Brookport's had some issues after the change over.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Bill payroll.
Okay.
Million four hundred eighty-five thousand total this past month. That bond payment was three cents of first, so that's the big bond payment every year. And everything else is fairly normal. Our cash balance, we did get, we've gotten all of our property taxes in except a million three, I think. Is that right? So we still are waiting on about 1.3 million, but that's the reason for our bump in our cash reserves. As far as expenditures to revenue, we did spend a little less than we took in in November, not a whole lot. October was the big jump, and we got the big property tax check in. So we should be in a period now where we're not going to get a lot. Moving forward, December, January, February, it'll just be stay dated until we get the rest of that property tax in, and then we're hoping that we get a categorical payment for transportation at some point this year.
We haven't received one yet.
I don't think we've had our first one this year yet. Our last one from last year came right there at the end, or could have been just after. I don't know if that came in July or not. I think it was July, so I think they caught up last year, this fiscal year, but we haven't had any for this year yet. If you, and if you remember, our bill, total bill, somewhere around 1.4 million for busing in the district a year, give or take, and we levy, you know, a couple hundred thousand from the property tax, so we rely on those categorical reimbursements to try to cover some of that cost. Fingers crossed we'll be getting some of that. I've also got the slide in there, I've updated total receipts versus expenditures, so we've taken in 12 million this year. We've spent nine and a half thus far since July 1st. That one was an old one. The board goals are focused on the communication, our staff's doing a great job communicating with parents. This is just one way that we track it with Remind, but we're already on pace to outdo last year's with the total announcements and conversations. The conversation is what I usually pay attention to because it's more than just, hey, there's a ballgame tonight or something like that, but usually something that goes back and forth. We've had 61,000 on most of those this year. Last year, we only had 96,000, so we're on pace to really blow that one out. Every school's increasing their conversations, so we've just been kind of monitoring that. And pre-K, we're starting to use pre-K more for this. They have their own system that they're supposed to use because of the grant and stuff, but we're using this one as well, so you might hear some of that. The five essential surveys is also something that's being administered now. We have to get, we have to receive a certain threshold from each stakeholder group, parents, students, and teachers before they'll print a report, and the student group is tied to the summative rating, so that's part of the summative rating calculation. And so we're really focusing on the students this year. Already this year, we've hit the threshold for parents, so even though the parents might seem a little low, we have to get at least 20% for them to publish the report, and we're above 20% in all of our schools. As you can see, the parents are in yellow there. We're still, still going. Some of the schools have not started administering to the students, they'll wait till after the break. We have until early February for that, but we need to try to get all of our students. It doesn't matter what people respond with, good or bad, it just matters if we get responses. That's how they kind of measure us, so they can gauge how we're doing from an opinion perspective or qualitative data. So that's going on. You'll hear more about that as we move forward into January. Also, the board focused on getting more volunteers, it's one of the things you guys identified last year when we were doing board goals. We have had several coming through the door recently, five, I just counted five new ones for Jefferson and the reading, which is quite impressive, especially for a school that size. We also had several new fifth and sixth grade coaches. Larry Sumner is one of volunteering at Jefferson, so we appreciate all the coaches at the fifth and sixth grade level because that's a thankless job, and we don't pay for it. We have that going on. We have the district spelling bee that happened at junior high the other week, and there's Mr. Capirelli in the top picture congratulating Mr. Patton, the winner overall, he's the junior high winner, but this was pretty impressive. All of these kids are spelling words that were pretty difficult there towards the end, so if you weren't there to see that, this is something, and I was hoping lucky to be here so they could see this because we definitely have a focus on spelling, and those kids can spell, I'm telling you. They were spelling words that I would definitely would have come in with, so it was pretty impressive to watch. That's something I believe the Beta Club sponsors put on, and this is the second year they've done that, so I'll try to get that out a little bit sooner next year, the third year, but they're planning on continuing that. And it's, I believe it was third, was it third grade or eighth, I think? Fourth grade, can't remember. It was fourth grade, too, so. All the schools had their own version of a spelling bee to, I guess, select the people that participated that night. That was pretty impressive. It was nice to see. I didn't make it last year, so it was interesting to watch that. As far as learning logs, I've been updating you on this, we are up to 380 this year, classroom observations, so we're really trying to push that. Our teachers have been great in actually asking some of our principals to come in when they know there's something they can see, so that's a lot more than we had last year at this time. Our enrollment trend, we started the year at 2027, right now we're at 2032. If it wasn't for Metropolis Elementary School, we would be way below that. Metropolis Elementary started the year at 529, and right now they're setting at 559. They have 30 new students from August. That's quite remarkable and unusual for us. We usually simply go down. And they, they went up in almost every grade level since the last week in November when I did this last time. So they're still getting new kids in right now, which is unfortunate for the kids to have to move schools at this time of year, but that's what's happening. If you look at the enrollment trend, you can kind of see what I was talking about. Most of the other schools are fairly flat or have gone down, which is typically what happens to us throughout the year. Elementary has gone way up this year, for whatever reason. And this is still a downward trend, just to not to be a negative, but we are still losing kids because that total number, that 2032 or whatever, includes pre-K. And when we used to track this several years ago, we never included pre-K because that was kind of separate from anything, so I could pull those out, but without pre-K, we'd be under 2,000. Before, when we used to track it, we were always at 2,100 to 2,150, in that range without pre-K. We were at 22 with pre-K. So we are still on a downward trend in the district. The facility updates, the maintenance grant did open last Monday, a week ago. I've been talking to Mike Basinger, we're looking at, that's a $50,000 match grant, so you have to put up 50,000 to get 50,000, but the nice thing is you can use it for health life safety. So we have all these health life safety repairs, so that's basically something we were going to do anyway, so this is like 50,000 free to help do that. So that's what we're going to try and use it on. We don't have all the plans yet, but we're planning on focusing on the high school because it has the most health life safety repairs, if you remember, on the health life safety survey. So that grant will go to the high school on some of the work we're doing here. First, we're doing the bleachers, and the bleachers are set to be replaced in March or however, depends on how long the basketball season is going, but as soon as basketball season ends, they're getting in here, and then they have until May, whatever we set for the graduation later tonight. So hopefully that will happen. The construction grant is separate from the maintenance grant, just going to keep reiterating that. We are still planning on, planning to apply for that grant. We still don't know the rules. I did talk to, I got to meet the state superintendent of schools, Dr. Carmen Ayala, a couple weeks ago, and she is on the committee, the new construction committee, which is, I think, called the capital development board, something like that, but they are meeting, they're coming up with the rules. One of the things they have to figure out is how they're going to handle schools like us that were on, at the top of the list last time when they stopped funding it. So they stopped funding in around 2003, and we were on that list to be funded. So if they wouldn't have stopped, we would have received grant money if we wanted it to build something. So they're trying to figure out whether or not they take any of that in consideration, or do they just scrap that, start over, and those are the things they're going to work on. We don't know yet. There is a teachers meeting tomorrow at the junior high school with the affected teachers. There are several stakeholder groups that Michael Basinger has to meet with, gather input in order to apply for this grant, so we're still working on the application procedure. We have to proceed with the application as if we're going to do it. So I want you to just be aware of that. You still have, you still get to decide at the end whether or not you want to take the grant or not, but to apply for the grant, you have to jump through all these hoops like you're ready to go. I think Larry said be shovel ready. You know, you have to have all this stuff in place in order to even apply for the grant, so that's what we're doing, trying to get all that out of the way. So Mike is going to meet with the teachers tomorrow. There's another meeting he's going to meet with maintenance custodians and stuff like that and gather input and so on, and then he puts together a plan.
Are you hearing any figures like percentage wise?
No.
Have you heard any of that yet?
That was asked when I was at the meeting with the state superintendent, and she said they're still just working on rules. After they figure the rules out, then they'll figure, like, how much they're going to match. Like, last time, Michael told us they match, they usually pay more for elementary schools than high schools. I don't know why, but that's part of the equation. I think elementary schools were at a 65% match last time around, and the high schools were more like 55 to 58% is what they would pay. So that's something that we'll have to wait and see, but that should be in all the rules and everything when the RFP comes out, which is still supposedly coming out in March.
Just other meetings will follow. Is that going to involve the public at some time?
Mike says he doesn't meet with the public, but that would be, that's something I think the board is definitely interested in doing. He has to gather the input basically for the planning phases from the instructional programming and stuff, that's what he's working on. So trying to design the space and adequate areas. Just so you know, we are getting out at 2:00 PM Friday. The exam schedule at the high school is a little different, so they usually get out a little earlier, and then we're out for Christmas break. I just want to point out, January 3rd is a teacher in service, so that's a Friday, the kids don't come back until the following Monday, but we do bring our teachers back. We've been doing that for a couple of years now, and it seems to work as a good transition. We're out Monday, the 20th for Martin Luther King Day, and then our first student half day for 2020 is January 31st, and we'll have a guest speaker coming in. Just some dates. I have put together a brief levy presentation because we do have the tax levy on the agenda tonight, so if anybody is interested, I thought it might be handy to just kind of go through this. If you have questions, stop me, or if I say something that doesn't make sense or is wrong, stop me. But I basically have four or five things to go through. Every year, the tax levy is a little confusing, but we generate money from the property tax, so that's what we're talking about here. Most districts in Illinois are opposite of us. We get a small portion of our operating budget from the property taxes, it's about a third, a little over a third. A lot of districts in Illinois, it's more like 75% comes from property tax. Those are the counties with obviously higher property values, so they get less from the state, and that's part of that whole evidence-based funding thing. But in those districts, it's more important to start your budgeting in December because you get so much of your budget from property tax. So your levy is a big part of your budget. For us, it's not as big of a part because we only get about a third of our money from our property tax. So just something to kind of keep in mind. The tax extension is something that comes out from the county clerk's office, so even though we're sending in the levy now, the levy is simply a request, they have a formula, they put it in, and since we are tax cap from PTO, they'll tell us what we get. And it's totally based on CPI and new property, so that's really all there is to it. Here, I include a chart of where we get our money. The local funds, that does include some, like, money we generate from our food service when we sell lunches. It also would be like, there's a small amount for textbook loans and stuff like that, that's often to the local funds, but the majority of that is property taxes. So we get about a third of our operating budget from property taxes, about 11% from federal funds, and the rest comes from the state. And that's why when you hear us talk about the state of Illinois, and they're kind of willy-nilly about sending checks sometimes, and like, for example, we're just talking about transportation, it is important to us, a lot of districts, it's not a big deal because most of their money comes from property tax. Ours, it is a big deal because most of our money comes from the state, so that's why we're always watching that. Just to look at the state and federal, I put it together, but it's basically two-thirds and one-third. State, federal's two-thirds, locals about one-third. If you wanted to see the dollar amounts, we get, I think this year, the tax levy that we're requesting is about 6 million. The rest of that is, like I talked about, the local funds from the lunch program, anything we sell and generate funds from. So the tax levy is basically this estimate. One of the things you'll know is we overestimate it, so we always ask for more and more on again because we don't know, we have to ask for it now, and we don't know what new property has been out there, what new buildings have been built, and so on. For example, when we get to the EAV, you'll see a jump, a couple of years ago, it jumped up a little bit, and that's when the surgical center was built and opened there on Dead Man's Curve. So new property like that can be a big deal, and it's important to catch that because that helps, you know, ease the burden of everyone else because you're paying, you know, a percent, so the higher your property value is in total, the less it's going to be for the individual, and I'll show you that in a minute. So we always try to capture all that new property, even though we don't know what it is. So basically, the tax, when we get our extension, which comes from the county clerk, they're just going to take last year's extension, add CPI, which is inflation, and that is 1.9% this year for this tax levy, and then any new property. And that's essentially what happens. So we can't raise taxes. I know taxes keep going up, and that's something that people will talk about a lot and ask you guys about. It goes up based on the inflation and new property, and basically that is just there, it's a mechanism in tax cap districts because if it goes up with inflation, essentially you're getting the same amount you did last year because things cost more. Costs more to heat our schools, costs more to drive our buses, et cetera, because that's what inflation's based on, I think. Mr. Hatfield used to say that the inflation's based, the biggest part of it's based on fuel costs because that, I, so many things, whether it's diesel for the trains or barges or whatever, you know, that's just a big driver of the inflation. Anyway, EAV, the equalized assessed value, that's something that's important. It's about one-third of the assessed market value. CPI is the inflation that we talked about, and we are tax cap. So I did include a historical CPI so you can kind of see where it's at. We don't set this, this is something they give us from the state. And right now, CPI for last year for this tax levy is 1.9. It's looking like next year's going to be 2.24 because inflation has increased this tax, or whatever. So that's what they're telling me. I did include some historicals so you can. I did include some historicals, so you can see what the levy was, so what we requested, while we actually got an extension and what the CPI was at that time, so you can kind of make some comparisons. And it does go up every year a little bit based on inflation. So we aren't increasing taxes by asking for more and raising them at a certain level, it's just inflation is what they're going up. I thought I'd include some of the historical. There is a little chart on the EAV, and you can see our total EAV, 150 million. It jumped up to 153, and that's when that surgical center, and that's just for, that's just for our taxing district. So some of this stuff, when I pull it, it pulls all of Massach County, but this stuff, we're looking at just Unit 1, not Joppa Maple Grove. So it does combine it sometimes on some of these charts. So again, total increase with real prop, with new property. We did increase a little more in CPI some of those years because there were new things that opened up, and that's the new property values. This is why it's important to have your property values going up, because if your EAV is going up, your tax rate's going to go down, and you're going to pay less as an individual. Our EAV has been the middle one, it's been pretty steady. That chart that I showed you back there, we did have a little bump that one year, but it's pretty flat, which is better than going down. If it's going down, your tax rate's going up, you're going to pay a bigger percentage. So that's something that we're always talking about, is the EAV from Massach County, and that's something we're looking at, because, you know, we've had a lot of plants closing. One of the things, when I talk to Gary Hamm at the assessor's office, is, you know, say the concrete plant stopped producing concrete, for example, how much is a concrete plant worth that's not producing concrete compared to one of this? Those are things he has to figure out, but that affects our EAV. And as that, as each plant's closed, he will move out, then our EAV goes down, which means the tax rate compared to the mail's goes up. So that's something to think about, if not something within our control, but something that we watch. I did have an EAV chart for pupil, so you can see how much per pupil compared to the EAV, which is the 150 million mark that we were looking at on the last chart. And you can see, it's been pretty steady, just like our EAV has been pretty steady. We did have a bump in 2012, and then it's been pretty steady. A couple of these other charts, it pulls all of Massach County, like I said, so there's Joppa Maple Grove on one side, Massach on the other, it's just because it pulls it by county. But you can see how we're pretty flat over the years. And this is EAV for pupil again, and you can look at that one if you have any questions, let me know, this is from software. I did include, I was able to add Harrisburg in there. One of the things you'll notice, whenever you look at Massach Unit 1, we are a pretty unique unit based on our buildings and size, and so there's not a lot of other unit districts in the state that are like us. So this software that we use, it'll find districts that are like us and tell us who they are. The only one near here is Harrisburg. None of the other school districts are like us because they have separate districts for elementaries, they have, you know, just different, less buildings. A lot of unit school districts do not have the buildings we have. You know, we're a unit district that's kind of made up of smaller buildings that are like Vianna. You know, they're all separate districts that we're in, so it's kind of hard to make comparisons. But I did include that one, so. And then there's also an analysis there, and that's for all of Massach County. So you can kind of see our taxing rate, and it is starting to creep up, so that's something we're going to watch. The only thing we could do about that, if we get to the point where we're able to, we could abate some taxes and, you know, just not collect them one year, and that is something that's possible. You can see, that's similar to what happened to Joppa Maple Grove after their lawsuit there, there's a negative part down there at the bottom. So that's something if we could put ourselves in a position, we might be able to do someday. But as our tax rate increases and creeps up, we're definitely going to have to look at that, because it is getting up there. So, I mean, it's always too high, I get that, but we're starting to get up there where it's getting crazy out of control. You don't want to be at 5%, above 5%. Definitely. No. Anybody have any questions about the tax levy or anything?
Unfinished minutes for operations and maintenance?
That's still in the works, so.
Table that. New finished consideration of tax levy for the tax year 2019, presentation attached?
Yeah, that's what I just went on.
Right, right. So we did that? We approved that?
And that's the total levy that we are requesting for this year, which is 6,231,083.
Okay, we need to, need a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any more discussion on that? Lisa Roque, please.
Mr. Cook, Ms. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Summer?
Yes.
Ms. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes. Okay, need a motion, consider a proposal for the school resource officer paid by the Massach County Sheriff's Department?
May I ask another question on that?
Yes.
So it's just for the elementary schools, it wouldn't include the junior high, high school, or MES?
Not this time.
And, but I guess you're thinking like the benefit of this is just...
Benefit is, right now, there's not much as far as anyone out of those outlines go. Schools that are further out. Yet schools like here, with the high school, Junior High, you know, you have, Trump and police are within two or three minutes from responding sometimes. You get something that happens out of Jefferson right now, you may be looking at somewhere in five, 15 minutes for somebody to respond, and within five minutes, a lot can happen. So I would like to start with somebody signed to those schools that could respond, is going to be out in that area during the times when they need.
But if, if, so if the officer, the resource officer's at Jefferson, but then something happens at Franklin, the response time would still be five to 15 minutes?
That's correct. One, it's definitely not a medical one, in my mind.
And the other thing you point out, when I was talking to you, Mr. Taylor, that if you have a dedicated person, it still increases the response time, because now sometimes your people are in court or on, in court and on traffic, so it would be a further, like, this would still make it a little bit quicker, right? Because they would be dedicated to that.
Correct. What I'm trying to do is free up, you know, each deputy's got duties that they do during the day, during the night. Trying to take some of the duties that one deputy would do, spread those duties out with other deputies, which would free up a deputy to be able to work the schools, if they be in the schools, for the kids. If something comes out that needs to be investigated through those schools, then that deputy would be the person that's dedicated to doing that.
Then it would be the same deputy running through Frank, I mean, for the entire school year, the same deputy, or would it be different?
Right now, it'd be the same deputy, however, it's not mandated, it's what I'm being told right now until 2021 for certification, and working on trying to get other deputies certified in case something happens, and if they, somebody gets hurt, or they have an illness, something needs to be out within a period of time, someone else could step in there.
I should probably point out, if, even if you take, Jeff Williams off, we still have to work out an MOU, and there's still things we have to iron out as far as roles and responsibilities and things. The offer ended up last...